So we have to, the statements.
So these still respond to you.
So it's, it's a state online and it's anything responsible, as they are right now.
I think.
And help start if you would. If you do, let me go put him on. Oh, he's going down on that line.
Okay, we're live. Just gonna have a couple of minutes. But we're live, so you might be live. Bring your letter over there. Bring your letter over there.
Better we have to.
To go bed. Uh huh.
Young lady.
I haven't opened them yet.
Good morning. Welcome to the Wednesday, December twenty-second meeting of the Henry County Commissioners. Would you please rise for the pledge and a short prayer? Heavenly Father, especially at this time of year, we ask you to bless our nation, bless his county, and may this meeting be conducted in a way that's pleasing to you. In Jesus' name, amen. Apologize for my voice. Guess this is as good as it's gonna get today. Have the commissioners reviewed the minutes from the last meeting?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Have the commissioners review the claims.
Make a motion to approve the claims as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Claims approved. Have the commissioners reviewed the payroll?
Make a motion to approve payroll.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Payroll approved, three zero. Mr. Murphy here. We have four contract agreements, they have extension agreements. I guess we'll approve them one at a time. First, I guess all four of these are from the Highway Department. First one is to extend the contract, extend an agreement with the Great Lakes Chloride Incorporated. Any discussion? Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion, will you approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
Motion passes three zero. Another extension agreement would pritch its backhoe service. Any discussion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Another agreement with Highway LLC. Any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. And last one, agreement with Duncan Robertson Incorporated.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
Commissioners, I, I was able to get two of the agreements signed by the companies. I haven't heard back from the other two, but I have Great Lakes Chloride and Duncan Robertson signed agreement, so if you could sign those, then they'll be complete.
That'd be fine. We have a number of bonds to approve. Just read them all off. We have a bond for Melissa, for Melissa Elmore Treasurer's Office for a hundred thousand dollars. Bond for Donna Tauber Trustee Township of Spiceland for thirty thousand dollars. Bond for Timothy Mundell Treasurer, Town of Middletown, for one hundred thousand dollars. Bond for Melinda Grounds Jefferson Township Trustee for thirty thousand. Nancy K. Harmon Treasurer, South Henry Regional Waste District, for a hundred thousand. Abby Snyder, Town of Dudley, trustee for thirty thousand. Henry County Solid Waste Management District for sixty thousand. Deborah Harry Treasurer, Middletown Public Library, for fifteen thousand. Deborah Walker Auditor for thirty thousand. Jennifer Grubbs Clerk for three hundred thousand. Stacy Goffey Coroner for fifteen thousand. Billy Hupchurch Treasurer for three hundred thousand. And for the Treasurer's Office for ten thousand. Any discussion over the bonds? Joe Burgess Prosecutor for fifteen thousand. Any discussion over these bonds?
Make a motion to accept the bonds as presented.
Second.
Bonds are accepted by vote of three to zero. We have one appointment to make. David Gratner for the Newcastle Henry County Public Library Board. Any discussion?
Motion will approve appointment.
Second.
Motion and a second. Vote is three zero, to appoint David Gratner to the Library Board. We have several reports that we have received. IT Monthly Status Report, Henry County Coroner's Office Report, Henry County Treasurer's November Monthly Report, IDM Title V Significant Source Modification Approval, and Waits and Measures Monthly Report. Any discussion about these reports?
Make a motion, we accept the reports as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Reports are accepted by vote of three zero. We have four different quotes, all from Piney Engineering, and all for work on our Justice Center. We have one for repacking leaking chilled water control valve for one thousand ninety-five dollars. Should, uh, maybe I should do these one at a time, let's... Any discussion about this quote? Any questions?
Make a motion to approve the quote for a thousand ninety-five dollars from Piney.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Another quote for, from Piney, for removing and replacing faulty blower motor and capacitor on the cabinet heater for the fire pump in room in the Justice Center for one thousand four hundred ninety-six dollars.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Other Piney Engineering remove and replace faulty domestic hot water pump motor at the Justice Center, one thousand seven hundred and six dollars.
I make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. And the last one, Piney Engineering, remove and replace faulty VFD five P and panel disconnect for RAF fifty-third floor at the Justice Center. It's not on the fifty-third floor, actually it's RAF five, on the third floor at the Justice Center. Three thousand eighty-five dollars.
I make a motion to accept as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Are there any departments present that wish to make a report? This is your last chance this year. Moving on to... We have a Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twelve dash twenty-two dash zero fourteen. Resolution establishing the intent to conduct a commissioner's sale to sell tax sale certificates for properties that are severely delinquent in payment of property taxes. Any discussion or questions about this resolution? You might want to read it.
Um, Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twelve dash twenty-two dash zero one four. A resolution establishing the intent to conduct a commissioner's sale to sell tax certificates for properties that are severely delinquent in payment of property taxes. Whereas there are several properties in Henry County that are severely delinquent in the payment of property taxes, having been offered for tax sales and which receive no bids equal to or in excess of minimum sell price, the parcel numbers of those properties being attached to this resolution as Exhibit A, and whereas there is an assessed value associated with these properties for taxation purposes, but no taxes are being collected, therefore causing a lower than expected tax distribution to those taxing units and taxing districts within which the properties are located, and whereas the Henry County Commissioners desire to have these properties back on the tax rolls with taxes being collected. And whereas IC six dash one point one dash twenty-four dash six allows for the Henry County Commissioners to acquire a lien on those delinquent properties and receive issuance of the tax sale certificates for those properties without taking title to the properties, therefore limiting the liability and cost normally associated with taking title. Now therefore be it resolved by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that the county executive shall acquire liens and receive tax sale certificates of the properties listed in Exhibit A that are severely delinquent and sell said certificates at a property advertised commissioner's tax sale.
I make a motion, we adopt this resolution?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution passes three zero. Just like Bobby said. And I also have a list up here that I'm not gonna read out. But if anyone is interested, I guess this is a list available to the public of which properties we're talking about. Next, we need to open, uh, we only have two, two bids for the Henry County Sheriff's Department fuel bids. Okay. I guess it's fixed average, we have an offer price of two point two one one four. I do not know what that means. Looks like they're both from the same place, but... Loading rack price.
Right, and you're from, you're from Coal Alliance, right?
Zero question marks.
Lead-free gas bread, from, this is from Coal Alliance. Are they both from Coal Alliance? Section one A, lead-free gasoline, eighty-seven octane quantity, fifty-five thousand gallons or less. And it says price loading rack price plus, and then there's question marks cents per gallon. Subject to change daily, so that's a... Okay, you wanna see this, Rick?
Yeah, I don't see the bid either. Now this one, I see the bid.
These are, it looks like these are identical bids.
Okay. Okay, so we only have one bidder. And for eighty-seven E-ten gasoline, price is two dollars and fifty-nine point two dollars. Fifty-nine one five. And for eighty-seven E-ten gasoline, two dollars point seven three four, three six four, fixed price, for fifty-five thousand gallons. And for premium diesel, price, three dollars point one four eight eight. And three dollars point for the fixed price, zero, three dollars, zero four seven four, for ten thousand gallons.
Tough.
Do I have a motion to accept this bid?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
Hey, Tom, are you here for the, because we didn't get that on the agenda, for the reason? I just wanted to make, I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss getting you on the agenda, sorry.
Just so you all know, I obviously have something, but it's not COVID. I have been checked. Actually, I'm having trouble.
Okay, next is the settlement participation form for the National Opioid Settlement. There are two, um, are two settlement agreements, this is the, um, for us to participate in the settlement with McKesson Corporation and the one with Johnson, and Johnson on the, the National Opioid, um, settlement program. And in order to participate, we need to approve these, uh, both of these.
I make a motion to approve them both.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three zero. Next, we have the invoice for Bellflower for us to be reimbursed for repairs to the McFarland Drain and Ditch for a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. For engineering services for inspection of roads and drainage, and performance for any emergency repairs to county roads, totaling two hundred and eighty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty cents. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries three zero. Next, we have the, um, voter registration new ballot on demand agreement. I read through these, I'm assuming... I'm assuming this is a standard thing for election years. We have to... Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And last is the irrevocable, in that section, last is the irrevocable standby letter of credit from Bellflower for the project. Instead of doing a bond, they did a letter of credit. This has been reviewed by Joel. And he is okay with this. All the, all of the agreements in here. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Last, looks like it... My book. Jeff Ray. We added Jeff Ray at the last. Jeff, you want to come on up?
Hello.
Good morning.
Again, I've, the last time I was here, you asked me to get written notification that the Indiana Department of Transportation, the meeting I, we had with, with them in October, they sent that letter to me for your review last Friday afternoon. And so I, I think I, I gave you those, the letter yesterday so that you could review it. It does show that they are in support of, of what we're wanting to do. It's all based upon getting funding from Food and Beverage Tax, of course, Projects Committee. And so at this point, that's, that's all they can do at this point is say, yes, it's, it's a possibility. And that's all we were asking for at this point. Because we haven't done any plans or design element yet for this project. But they understand where it is and where it would go crossing State Road 3. So, you know, the letter states that they want to see the design, final design plan and all that. So they can do, and a permit issued. So that process happens after we would be potentially funded for the project through Food and Beverage Tax and whenever that is. It might not happen, it might happen. So it's preliminary approval for that process. And so I came back with you with the letter stating that, that you would be the unit of government to, to sponsor that because we had to have a unit of government that would sponsor that permit application and the design and engineering plans would be submitted to them. So we have that. And I would, it would, I would hope you would sign the letter that I gave you that states that you're, you're okay with allowing the trail to go on county ownership and utilize most of the old interurban corridor along State Road 3. So if that's okay.
Saying the letter that she gave us, it says it crosses State Road 3 north of La Ray Road.
Yeah, and La Ray Road is the entrance to the softball fields. And when you look on Google Maps, I had to really zoom in to be able to see that it shows up. So they had been looking at Google Maps when we had our meeting and looking at where that crossing, potential crossing would be. And then they put that in the letter and then I had to also send an email to them on Monday asking them, I'm not sure where La Ray Road was. And Nathan got back with me and said that, hey, it's the, it's the, the entrance. They're just north of Victory Drive. And okay, so I zoomed in and it was the softball fields. So he even made the comment, it looks like it doesn't go very far, but on Google Maps, it's La Ray Road. So I wasn't aware of that. I don't, I don't think anybody's really aware of that. So you and I would think La Ray Road is up by La Ray.
That's where I'd put it.
Yeah. And I think the county recognizes that that is a La Ray Road and up going through La Ray and on east. So that was news to me.
Say, the only concern I have with all this is the whole thing with crossing 3. And if you're talking to the engineering firm and the highway department, there's a whole lot of paperwork that still needs to be done on this for us to say, yes, it's okay. I don't have a problem supporting the rest of it. It's the crossing of 3 as far as where the county's liability enters. Because that's all we need, somebody crossing there and getting smoked by a vehicle coming down 3, even though there's a light there, that doesn't always ensure safety and liability the county has in granting this. So I am a little concerned about that part. Other than that, I don't really have an issue with this.
Yeah, I think at this point, it's preliminary because if we don't get a funding from Food and Beverage Tax Committee, approval from them as well as funding from the county council, then, you know, the project's not going to move forward. So certainly, you're going to be involved in this from, if we're able to get funding, then you're going to be involved with this. Joe's going to be involved, Indot's going to be involved. And I think all those questions would be addressed later on.
I think we did have some discussions on this. And we are in support of the trails throughout the county in just about every place where they're proposed. And even though the state took a look at this, we feel like the state should, when it comes to crossing a state road, give us some type of recommendation of how safe they think it is. Because we don't feel qualified to say whether or not bicycles and pedestrian traffic crossing 3 causes a, a problem. And that's why we're reluctant. Not, not that we're against trails in any way. The idea of stopping traffic on Route 3 anytime, it could be at any time of the day. We want to really sort of have some type of indication from Indot saying that they don't see any problem with it. Particularly several times a day, sometimes 3 is very busy. But to stop traffic on 3 because we want a walking trail across 3, we do have concerns about that.
Well, once again, I think that's all going to be discussed later on. If we were able to get funding for this, then that's going to be definitely a discussion item with them. With them give, the, the letter stating that it's preliminary approval of the Hawk Signal gives you an idea that they don't do this lightly. So just to give preliminary approval, to see what the final design plans look like, then I think there's plenty of time at that time to discuss all that to safety. So that you're more comfortable with the crossing of State Road 3 with them. I, there's no doubt that there'll be more discussion with them about this. And Valerie is over, was, is, is over, is their supervisor of Nathan and O'Neil at this point. So they had that discussion with her and then she wrote this, you know, they wrote the letter for her and she signed it. So at this point, we're in good shape from, just from a, a design standpoint.
I'm kind of feeling like a parent here where kids asking me, you know, mom said it's okay if you say it's okay, then run back to the other one and say, dad said it's okay if you said it's okay. And that's where I feel like we're at right now. So I'm, I'm a little reluctant with the whole 3 thing because I can just envision even with a light there, a family coming up there with a couple of small kids before somebody gets a chance to hit the signal and a child darts out in front of 3 and that not ending well for anyone. So I would like a little more investigation as far as whether a light's actually the best and most feasible. Should we go over 3? Should we go under 3 like it used to be? I have concerns and reservations about the light, I really do.
Can, can this be separated out into different phases? You know, phase with the trail going over the Big Blue? Because that's, that's part of this, correct?
Yeah, the bridge over Big Blue is, we, we don't have final cost estimate of that. You know, we're working with Perry Knox on that.
Right.
And he's, he's already told me that they would have a cost estimate that I would put in the application, the Food and Beverage Tax application when it's due on January 10.
I'm, I'm okay given approval for the use of county-owned parcels to construct on the east side. Am I correct?
Right, right, east side.
I'm okay with that, like the others. I'm just a little concerned about crossing. I mean, that's four lanes of traffic that fly through there.
Right.
I'm, and I understand you're putting, but I'm, I'm reluctant until getting additional information.
So I need to, so you're wanting me to?
Even with the letter, I'm still reluctant. Yeah. Well, that's what we had talked about. Yeah, it got filled in.
When they, when they redid the whole State Road 3 roadbed in the 90s, they took that out. There was no plan for trails at that point. We weren't looking at doing trails until 2003, 2004. So that was done in the mid 90s when they, you know, they tore that, all that roadbed out and they rebuilt all of that. That tunnel was taken out then. There was no trails planned. There was no need for access by pedestrians at that point to go underneath 3. That trail, that tunnel was there to help with, probably even back when the inner urban was there, when it was a... Sure, sure. You know, when my kids were young and we lived in Rain Tree Heights, we used that tunnel to get across 3. So it wasn't maintained and it was full of water and leaves. And, and so they said, well, there's no, nobody here locally is asking for the tunnel to, to be kept. And so it was taken out as, because there was no, no accommodation asked for. So...
I'm going to suggest that this be done in phases. And I'm going to make a motion that, to approve use of the county-owned parcels on the east side of 3. So you can go ahead and get started with that phase. I think to cross 3 and to connect to Memorial Park, we need to involve the park board as well.
Yes, and I have talked with, with Rita on this before. And I am going to the, the November meeting I wasn't able to attend. And they had some questions, so I'm going to the meeting next Monday night to talk with them. In the past, they have already approved it. But again, it's been a couple of years. We have new park board members. They aren't really aware of what the park board talked about then. And so I'm going back to them to talk about that. They had no major objections to, to it. They just had some questions about clarity, just like we're having questions about clarity here, so...
So my motion is to grant approval for use of the county-owned parcels on the east side of 3 to construct up to 3. I, I'm not against you going for ready or food and beverage or anything like that. I'm hesitant to, as a commissioner, to say I support this project to the Food and Beverage Committee because I'm not, no other person is coming to us or they would come to us and say, would you support? And I'm reluctant as a commissioner to, I'm reluctant as a commissioner to give support to anybody. I don't mean that to sound bad, but I don't want to influence the Food and Beverage Committee in any way. I'm saying, but the commissioners support us getting food and beverage.
Of course. So when we met last month, I took that out because you had raised questions about that.
Well, I guess I should expand that. I'm reluctant to put my support behind the use of either ARP or any of these as a commissioner because I don't want to unduly sway anybody in their decisions by saying, well, the commissioners support this project.
Okay.
Is, is my, I'm not saying I don't support you doing the
I understand.
Trail, but I, in my mind, us giving, you getting a written letter signed by us to any of those committees gives, could give the impression of trying to influence those committees. Intentional or unintentional. It could have the appearance.
So with the, with the letter as presented, what do you want me to take off?
Everything except A.
Okay.
Because A pretty much is the county-owned parcels to construct the electric, or Honeybee Electric Path from Mobile Right to Garner Street, cross Blue River with a bid addition, well, actually, and modify, connecting to Memorial Park, just to 3.
Okay. I, I
I need to restate that motion. It was a little convoluted. Let me re- Up to State Road 3, not crossing and not connecting to Memorial Park.
Sure. So is it okay if I bring this letter back to you later today? Okay, sorry.
I'll cite that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Sure. I can bring that back to you this morning. Okay. Good enough. Thank you.
We have a 10:30 meeting at the jail site, so late morning, early afternoon.
Yeah. That'll be fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody from the pub, you said you're here on a different... Oh, it was the zoning. You're going to bring that to the next meeting. Okay. Okay. Anybody else have, Rick, do you have any? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
I mean, you can have the one I had here if you want him to have it. We got, yeah, I got. I was just thinking out of my book.
That's just you.
Where the heck was that?
No. Wait a minute. Yeah, these are just Ed 2.
Our talent.
No, it's nine.
Bobby, you know we all signed it on, on Hanger actually.
Oops.
Yeah.
There's a small T for that. It, it covers all the bills. And then you can have them all.
I feel fine, I just, I have my voice. Let's stay organized. Everything we sign will go this way.
Okay.
Well, you just make sure that it's signed good.
Oh, and Debbie on these, the ones that you had signed for Joe, that you have to attest to, Joe asked you, you can go ahead and scan and give him the copy back, he would appreciate that.
Here's the thing, Joe needs to start giving everything that needs to be signed, copied and done to Debbie in the auditor's office and not bring them over meetings.
Because I don't know if, I have four.
He does, that's no, this is what, this is what he said at the start of the meeting was.
I understand.
He only had, he only got two back, he was waiting on the other two. So he didn't know if we wanted to go ahead and do them now. And he said if we did, that's why he handed them to us. So that's why we have the two. And he made copies, he wanted to know if you could scan them and give him the copy back, he would appreciate it. That's all I'm asking. Very, in my opinion.
What?
The few of this were confusing.
Well, that's why I got confused.
Mm-hmm. It's like, because when I was reading it.
This is probably the most you ever signed at one meeting.
I think so.
I haven't signed anything, I'm just sitting down here.
Well, then, yeah.